Welcome everyone to the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three Tommater City Council Work Session, calling the meeting to order. I believe we have everyone here. All council members are present, so I'll dispense with roll call. So we have an item on the agenda, which is the carbon sequestration white paper update. And Alyssa Jones Wood is going to present. John, did you have anything before we start? No? Okay, so welcome Alyssa, and I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Allison Osterberg from TRPC is actually going to be presenting tonight, just to set up her presentation. This carbon sequestration white paper is part of the interlocal agreement work plan for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. It was first presented to the Climate Action Steering Committee in February of this year. And Allison is a senior planner with TRPC and authored the paper, so I will hand it off to her. And thank you very much, Allison, for being here.
Good evening, and thank you so much for having me. Pull up this presentation. And someone give me a nod, make sure you can see the screen, all right? Looks good, great. So as Alyssa mentioned, I'm Allison Osterberg with Thurston Regional Planning Council. And I've been working with Tommater in the cities of Olympia and Lacey and Thurston County as well on developing the climate mitigation plan. And when we developed that plan in 2020, carbon sequestration was a part of that overall plan. And one that folks wanted to dive into in a little more detail after the plan was wrapped up. So I'll walk through a summary of the report that was included in your packet, which digs into some of the questions that were left over after the climate mitigation plan. We'll give a little background, a little bit of context of what was in the climate mitigation plan. And sort of what we've learned since then about what does sequestration look like in the Thurston County region? And what are some policy options and kind of thoughts about how to move forward from here? And something that I've learned along the way during this research with carbon sequestration is that it's a, it's a new, it's a field that's really expanding quickly. There's new information coming out all the time. And if you've encountered discussions about carbon sequestration and they quickly leave you feeling sort of like this, there's lots of math. It can kind of get complicated quickly, and it's easy to kind of get lost in the forest of details around it. So I'm a humble liberal arts major. And so what I'll try to do in this conversation is, is walk through kind of at a high level, try to boil down what are some of the essentials for you to understand when folks in our community are talking about carbon sequestration as a climate mitigation strategy. So carbon sequestration is a process that happens naturally all the time. Where carbon dioxide is removed from the atmosphere and stored somewhere else. That can be a natural process, it can be an artificial process. But carbon dioxide that's in the atmosphere is changed into carbon and stored in soil, vegetation, liquids, all kinds of different ways. There are a lot of terms out there that, and they all have specific meanings, but they, they bound on carbon sequestration. Some contexts, you might hear the terms carbon dioxide removal. You might hear negative emissions technologies or nets. Our carbon or emission offsets, those are often talking about carbon sequestration. In the realm of climate change at the international level, the IPCC, which is the international organization looking globally about climate change impacts, what's happening with our atmosphere and how it works. They have done a lot of modeling about what we need to do to address climate change and reduce emissions. And you know, they have said in all the pathways that they've looked at in those models, some kind of carbon dioxide removal process will be necessary to meet those international climate targets. So the fact that we're talking about it locally is not unique, it's something that's recognized in many climate conversations. That carbon sequestration will need to be a part of the overall picture when it comes to addressing climate change. Some concepts I want to introduce, and again, you don't have to memorize this stuff, it's, but good to keep in mind. But sometimes when I hear people talking about, about carbon sequestration, they're conflating a couple of different things, and that can lead to some confusion. There's a concept that I want to introduce called the carbon stock. And so that, the carbon stock is when carbon is stored. Stored, it might be in trees, it might be in rocks, it could be any kind of thing, but it's sort of just sitting there, it's banked. And that's usually measured as tons of carbon. And the other concept is carbon flux. Carbon flux is the change. So the way the carbon is moving from one of those pools to another kind of pool, the way it's moving from the atmosphere into vegetation, or from vegetation into the soil, or from soil back into the atmosphere. And that is, you'll see references in, in the, in the white paper and also in this presentation. We usually report that out as metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year. And the important part about that is the per year. It's a process that's kind of time limited. And so you might hear people say, this is something that comes up a lot with carbon sequestration. You'll have people, people on the one hand who are saying what's most important is for us to protect old, large trees. And then you'll hear another group say something like, well, young trees sequester more carbon. And those, both of those statements can be true. And that has to do with these different concepts. Older, larger trees store a lot of carbon. They're, they've got a lot in the bank. And younger trees are hungrier, they're drawing a lot down from the atmosphere. And so they can also be creating that carbon flux. So it, it's important, both of those concepts, it's important for us to have a bank of carbon that is not going up into the atmosphere and contributing to emissions. And it's also important for climate targets that we're adding to that bank through increasing carbon flux, in this case, carbon sequestration. There are many different types of carbon sequestration. There's terrestrial sequestration, which is that mainly focused on those vegetation or biological processes where you have trees or grasses or other types of vegetation that through photosynthesis or drawing carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere, moving it down into leaves and into the soil through their roots, those kinds of processes. There's what's called oceanic sequestration, also sometimes called blue carbon, which is a process through which we have algae or things like kelp or eelgrass that are in marine conditions. And they draw again carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere and it's stored in our oceans. In marine areas, wetland areas also. And there's a category of sequestration called geologic sequestration. And if you hear the concept of carbon capture, sometimes this is taking, looking with power plants to take emissions and bury them into geologic formations. And all of these types of sequestration, they're, they're happening. There's projects in Washington State for all of these that are, that are underway. But when it comes to the climate mitigation plan, we're really focused on terrestrial sequestration. We did have an action in the plan focused on blue carbon, and it will come up a little bit later, was a priority identified by the Squawson Island Tribe, who are really interested in blue carbon in some of their traditional lands, and looking at that option. But the climate mitigation plan mostly focuses on options around terrestrial sequestration. And that terrestrial sequestration is, people often think about trees, that's what you hear the most about, and why trees are drying carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere and storing it as carbon. But it can also look like agriculture. We also talk about regenerative, regenerative agriculture processes in the climate mitigation plan. So doing different types of agricultural practices that increase the amount of carbon that's being moved from the atmosphere into the soil through things like cover cropping or different kinds of grazing practices or different types of kind of interplanting trees with different cropping, all kinds of different practices that you can use as part of that. So agriculture can also be, depending on how it's done, can be a carbon sequestration practice. And also our native prairies can perform carbon sequestration. So this graphic is showing how they, how that works. We have our beautiful prairie plants, especially this time of year. And above ground, they're often very low. And they're flowering and they're doing their thing, but the carbon sequestering is happening underground with these deep root systems that they have that. And that's kind of where they're storing carbon in the soil. Prairie ecosystems don't sequester carbon at the, at the rate of our evergreen forests. But they are still an important potential source of carbon sequestration in our community. So that's sort of a little bit of a background in the climate mitigation plan. We specifically focused on three types of carbon sequestration, regenerative agriculture, reforestation or afforestation, which is either planting trees where they used to be or planting more trees where they never have been. And prairie preservation and restoration. There are a couple of strategies included in the plan and actions tied to those strategies that again focused on agricultural practices and preserving tree canopy and managing prairies to sequester carbon. And some of the assumptions we made in the plan is that we would use sequestration to offset countywide emissions. And that we would not, we would include sequestration, but it would not be that we would be buying offsets for our emissions outside of Thurston County, so it wouldn't be offsets in the sense of, we're going to buy carbon credits from some kind of, say, rainforest process happening on the other side of the world. And we're going to achieve our targets that way. There was a lot of interest in the plan about the incorporating carbon sequestration as a, as a multiplier of benefits. In our area, we're already doing a lot of work around habitat preservation and management with prairies and forests and agriculture. And the idea was, how can we also consider those important aspects, the benefits they would have from a climate, from a climate perspective as well as the benefits that they provide to our community? So as part of the climate mitigation plan, we, we completed what we call a wedge analysis. And so what this shows is that these are our emissions. And under business as usual, they would be increasing over time. And we set targets instead where we wanted to decrease them. Our overall countywide emissions forty-five percent by twenty thirty and eighty-five percent by twenty fifty. Now, what we found through the climate mitigation planning process is that through a number, there are a number of state policies that have just gone into place mainly around, around energy use and transportation that could potentially reduce emissions significantly. There were a number of things we could do locally that would also reduce emissions. And those state and local actions would be enough to get us to our twenty thirty goal. But we would be short of our twenty fifty goal. And that's where sequestration really came in. What we said is that we're going to close that gap through sequestration. That's how we're going to get to that bigger goal. And overall, when you look at it, it accounts for about ten percent of the emission reductions needed to meet the twenty fifty target. And I will say that, you know, these are pretty rough estimates that were developed at the time. So it's something that I think that's important to remember is that what we said is that we're going to use carbon sequestration in lieu of reducing our own emissions more. We're going to allow a certain amount of, of us, our behaviors or activities to continue to release emissions into the atmosphere. We're going to make up for it by increasing sequestration in our area to cover some of that gap. I think it's just important to recognize that that, that was the, that was the reasoning that's baked into, to including sequestration as part of the targets. So that target was to sequester three hundred and eighty thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent by twenty fifty. And that was a combination of some rough estimates around increasing soil carbon through agricultural practices and through afforestation and reforestation. I will just be really upfront and say, these were very rough estimates at the time that we did the planning effort. And they didn't include a lot of things that we talked about in the plan and that have become kind of a bigger part of this conversation since then. But we did not estimate what is the carbon sequestration or carbon stock provided by existing trees and other land cover? What, what's happening right now in our community? How much are these contributing? We didn't estimate the carbon sequestration value of restoring our prairie ecosystems. We didn't make any particular estimates around the value of urban trees, there were some general estimates based on in kind of more rural tree conditions. And we didn't look at what the impact of changes to land use might be, such as loss, loss of forest land or conversion of forest land to developed land. And so that left us with some questions at the end of the planning process. And apparently among those was understanding how much carbon does land in Thurston County already sequester? What's our baseline? We need a baseline in order to understand whether our activities in the future are adding to that or subtracting to that value. And we wanted to know how much more carbon could certain land covers potentially sequester in the future if we did some different kinds of things. And then we wanted to know what, what are those things that we could do? And really, there is an underlying question that that target that we came up with for the plan, is it even feasible? Is it really doable? And so I'll summarize a little bit of what we found now through this work. On that question of what is the baseline sequestration for Thurston County? We looked at a couple of different methodologies, but I'll highlight the main one. The, there's a tool that we used called through the organization ICLI, it's called LEARN. And I, I don't off the top of my head remember what the acronym calls, calls. But essentially what the LEARN tool does is it uses aerial images at one point in time and another point in time and compares them and looks at those land use types and uses some basic estimates about the carbon emission factors of different land use types to say, how did the land change over that period? And how might that change in land use and land cover translate to a change in carbon sequestration? And so using that LEARN tool, we came up, which is only available to look at the, look at forests and trees. It generated an estimate that forests and trees in Thurston County sequester approximately nine hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year. So that's a piece of that question we had. It only covers part of it. It doesn't tell us, what do other types of land uses in Thurston County? How does that fit into our sequestration puzzle? How does agriculture contribute to it? How do prairies, how do other types of land uses? So it gives us some information that we didn't have before, but, but still leave some gaps. And there isn't a similar tool that's available at the moment, although there's protocols out there to do a more complete land use analysis. That's an option that could be done in the future. So what that looks like for sequestration, breaking down the information from the LEARN tool a little bit, is that when we look at rural parts of the county, that really makes up the bulk of our sequestration that's happening right now. Most of our forested land is in the rural parts of the county. Most of our larger trees, evergreen trees are in the, that sequester more are in the rural parts of the county. And so that makes up the biggest chunk. Trees in our urban areas make up kind of a smaller proportion of our overall baseline. But together, urban trees, rural trees together contribute to that baseline. When we come to that, back to questioning the sequestration target that's in the climate mitigation plan, you know, you might look at this number and say, okay, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred metric tons of carbon a year, that's great. Our overall emissions are around three million a year. That offsets about a third of our overall emissions. It's one way you could think about it, but it's probably not the best way to think about it. Because what we're saying is that this is our baseline, what we're doing now. Looking forward by twenty fifty, in order to cover that gap, our emissions gap from our wedge analysis, we need these trees to be sequestering an additional three hundred and seventy-five thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent each year. We got to add to our bank compared to where we're at now. Well, how do we do that? Oh, that's about a forty percent increase over where we're at today. So how can we do that? We looked at a number of different tools in the literature. We were looking specifically for estimates of strategies to increase carbon sequestration that were geographically specific and included information for Thurston County. And so we found a number of different tools that were out there and combined them in the paper. So we got some estimates for increasing regenerative agriculture where that's possible, increasing reforestation on lands, increasing prairie preservation. And so those were the strategies that came right from the climate mitigation plan. But we also looked at the potential for some other actions that either weren't included in the plan or were not a prioritized action. So they might have been on our long list of actions, but were not included on the shorter list that was prioritized. Those actions included extending timber harvest. So for timberlands, instead of harvesting every ten years, letting trees live longer so that they get larger, so they're sequestering more carbon, avoiding the conversion of forests in the first place and not losing that stock of carbon. And title wetland restoration or that blue carbon type of restoration. And what we found, you know, looking across these studies is that combining those different activities have, those have the potential to increase sequestration. The, specifically the actions in the climate mitigation plan, combined with these additional actions, if we do them at a pretty high level, can get us pretty close, can get us far along the way to our target. But even with pretty ambitious estimates of applying all of those different strategies, we would still fall short of our sequestration target for twenty fifty. And you know, that's really doing a lot of things, a kind of full blast. So where does that leave us going forward? The report outlines around thirty different actions that local partners could consider taking going forward. Some of those options look at different kinds of technical assistance, different kinds of regulatory approaches, financial incentives, and some data needs that might help going forward. And I'll highlight just a couple that, that folks might want to think about going forward. One is supporting rural forest conservation and incentive programs. Something we call out in this research is just the importance of forests in our rural areas and how important it is to conserve them over the long term and build them over time. Something I hear sometimes in these conversations is that because, because there's so much of our forest area and agricultural area and prairie area really is in the rural parts of the county, the carbon sequestration is Thurston County's responsibility and not the responsibility of cities. And I, I would like to counter that if, if, if that's something that's on people's minds a little bit, because there's a shared emissions target. And, and all the jurisdictions involved in the climate mitigation plan have said the way you want to achieve your twenty fifty target is through that type of carbon sequestration. That it's just as much the role of all the cities to make sure carbon sequestration is, is successful in the long term. So some ways that, that, that can happen going forward is looking at some of the work happening at the state level around carbon sequestration policies for things like our, our state forests, how are those are being managed? And also really looking at the feasibility of different regional incentive programs to conserve and increase rural forest management strategies. A number, a number of different programs are possible. A second kind of bucket of options would be to focus on aligning existing programs with sequestration goals. So all our jurisdictions are coming up on their periodic updates of comprehensive plans. So thinking about the role of carbon sequestration in those planning processes, what should be highlighted, what kinds of policies should be included? For Tommater, I think continuing to the great work that's happening around completing and implementing habitat conservation plans, which have an embedded piece of those around prairie preservation and conservation and restoration, recognizing the, the kind of co-benefit of climate mitigation that comes through those programs. And something else that folks could think about long term is, is if it does feel like it's going to be pretty challenging to reach that carbon sequestration target, then I might need to revisit the targets that are in the plan and identify something based on new information for what will be reasonable and feasible for folks to achieve. Another bucket of actions that folks could take on are filling some of those data gaps. As I mentioned, we've had some preliminary estimates focused on baseline sequestration for trees. But that still leaves some question marks about our other types of land uses. So there are protocols out there, and that's something that folks could do in the future is identify, get a fuller picture of the, of what's happening with sequestration across all our different land covers. Filling in some of the gaps of information around prairies, specifically because we, our prairies are, are an almost unique for a region or area ecosystem, getting, there's some really good people working in the prairie sector. And I think a lot of interest in, in getting a better understanding about the role that they play. And by the same token, looking at regenerative agriculture practices, how different kinds of practices can be used, how much they can be expanded in our area, and just kind of working with some of our local partners around that. And all that will be more successful with support from community stakeholders. So continuing to build those relationships with community partners and tracking what's happening at the state and federal levels. But I think there are some questions for the climate mitigation plan, folks going forward to continue thinking about. Some of those are, you know, what actions do folks want to take locally and regionally to achieve the carbon sequestration targets? And really, what should the, should, what role should carbon sequestration play in achieving those targets? Do we need to adjust our assumptions or adjust our targets, knowing what we know now? And, and as new programs and new information is coming out, what is where the role of carbon sequestration in the overall climate strategy for our region? what is where the role of carbon sequestration in the overall climate strategy for our region? What should be the relative role of different sequestration strategies? How much should we focus on forest areas? How much do we focus on prairie areas? How much do we focus on different kinds of technologies that we haven't looked at so far in the plan, like around blue carbon? And, you know, getting a better understanding about the long-term costs relative to the benefits of different strategies. I think there's some initial information that we included about that, but I think folks will want to dig into that more. But they want to highlight that there is a lot of other work going on in the state. The Department of Natural Resources has highlighted as a bigger part of its overall programs, looking at carbon sequestration in its land management practices. And they have a relatively new program called the Carbon Project where they're identifying lands that they manage and are going to be setting them aside, managing them for carbon sequestration and registering them as carbon credits. That program's a way to generate funds for state lands as a potential way of the way that timber management generates funds right now to see how viable it would be to do that. The Washington State Conservation Commission has a great program kind of supporting the voluntary stewardship programs across the state, including in Thurston County, and building out the Sustainable Farms and Fields Program, which should provide better guidance around using regenerative agriculture practices in concert with climate mitigation efforts. And something that's really starting to ramp up is the state's Cap and Invest Program under the Climate Commitment Act. Carbon offsets are a part of that program and so major polluters and messengers in our state can purchase carbon offsets as part of this market system. And there are protocols in place already at the state around registering projects for reforestation, avoiding forest conversion, improving forest management, a lot of different methodologies. But something to be aware of with this or with the carbon project or any kind of carbon offset program that's included in some kind of registry is that you might think that there's a lot of opportunity for these projects and they can be income generators. However, let's say you have an offset project and it's set in Thurston County. It gets registered. It has a certain number of carbon credits and those are sold through a market. And maybe they're purchased to offset emissions from some kind of industry in some other part of the state. What that means then is that that sequestration potential that we've identified as a potential for our area isn't available to offset Thurston County's own emissions. It's offsetting kind of on the state level or in this bigger market. And I think that's something to kind of for folks to keep in mind going forward. How will these different carbon market systems affect our ability to use our our own local ecosystems to meet our carbon targets, our emissions targets in the long term? That's really an emerging area, but just something to watch. So in conclusion, for the baseline going forward, we can say that in Thurston, in the Thurston County region, our forests and trees sequester around nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand tons of carbon dioxide equivalent a year, but we need more information to get a complete baseline. Our targets in the Climate Mitigation Plan were really ambitious. It's going to be really hard to make those. There aren't a lot of clear pathways to achieve those targets. However, 2050 is pretty far away. There could be new technology, new information that comes out that could bring that more into line. But the way, just reviewing what's out there now, it would be really, really challenging to hit that target. And there are a number of options for partners in the region to begin to move forward around carbon sequestration. I think something to keep in mind is that it is a long game. It's important to get started thinking about it now, but it doesn't have to be solved tomorrow. It is something to be thinking about over the long term, over these decades, how are we going to get there? But in order to do that, I think you have to have some sustained focus on it. And I will wrap it up there and see if folks have any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Don.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm channeling Eileen right with budget and numbers. And just thinking of the ongoing conversation of looking at those numbers of sequestration, right? And that the burden is on rural areas, right, and less on the urban. Yet our urban neighbors have twice the population, twice the budget versus our rural communities who are smaller and don't have that funding source. So I'm just wondering, how does that play out as we move forward of, you know, you talked about not buying credits from another place, but could that be an option within our jurisdictions?
I mean, I think that's a really important thing to discuss. You're absolutely right. There is there is an economic disparity that are, I think, I think it's a resource for our whole community, our rural forest area, our rural natural lands. I think it's important that we not think of it like, oh, those are just county areas and these are just city areas. We have a regional goal around emissions. There are more emissions of certain other types that are happening in urban areas. There are more opportunities for sequestration. It's important to the county. It's important to the urban areas that all those pieces come together. I think it is important to think about that economic piece. What is the value in our urban areas of those rural areas continuing to sequester carbon? And what value do they provide to our community as a whole? And how are we going to maintain that? Even if there is a financial cost to it, what is that value to us? And how are we going to sustain it?
Thanks, Allison.
Councilmember Alt-Houser.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. This is, it's just really exciting to see some of these things come. I mean, we've been talking about this a really long time, so it's exciting to see next steps and progress. Makes things feel more tangible, more real. I think my question is just sort of about like the feedback loop. So I guess I'm sort of curious about, I don't totally understand the architecture of the systems for memorializing progress that we make as an individual jurisdiction. So like, you know, prairie land is a very big issue in terms of providing sequestration as well, in addition to old growth trees. So if we, you know, preserve some habitat for the Matzama pocket gopher in perpetuity, how does that sort of get memorialized for making sure that we hit those targets? Or for instance, you know, we're going to consider adopting some regulations on cutting down trees, which will result in a lot fewer trees being cut down citywide. How does sort of our progress in doing individual policy work as a legislative branch get memorialized so that we make sure that, you know, it's reflected in our progress in trying to meet those goals and those targets?
That is a really great and important and a very difficult question. I mean, I think there, and I think we see this with a lot of things, right? You, there are some choices to be made about how nitty gritty you want to get with accounting. Because there is a world, there is an option where you go in in the future and you have staff who are measuring every tree that went up, who came down, or every acre that went this way or that way and what category it is. You could do that. It would be really expensive to do that. And a question you might want to think about, that all these folks will need to think about is, and that's really important information. You want to see the value of the policy changes you're making. And something like the Learn Tool will show it, but it's going to be on a big landscape scale. They're really not super fine grain. It's coarse. And it's going to be lumped in with everything else that's happening. You're not going to be able to pull out, here's how Tumwater's tree regulations, here's exactly what they did. There might be better tools in the future that can help drill into that more. But you will have to decide if you will be satisfied with, you know, a less what's the level of comfort you have with getting them reporting back? Are you comfortable with a general reporting, knowing that you can do that quicker and less expensively, and that will reserve more of your funding to go toward doing the kinds of actions on the list, like funding some kind of reforestation effort? That's a trade-off for our community and all communities going forward. How much do you want to spend on getting to exact numbers? Because you could spend a lot of money trying to get to exact numbers and they still necessarily solve all your questions. Or can you be okay with a little bit of uncertainty, knowing that it's going to wash out and you just want to get the general trend line?
Well, really, if we don't have to answer that question today. But thank you for your insight. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. This is both hopeful and very discouraging to me. We can't play a long game and save the planet. We don't have decade after decade after decade. So I believe everything we do makes a huge difference. Every large tree, of which many in my own neighborhood have come down in the city of Tumwater, is detrimental to the climate and to sequestration. And even though, as Councilmember Alt-Houser has asked, we may not be able to track everything or get credit for everything or whatever, however, we're trying to do that. But we as a city have, I think, a moral obligation to take more action on climate change that we declared an emergency and to, which we're in the process of doing finally, updating our tree ordinance and sticking to it and being tough and letting our community know, along with working with the county and whatever. This is an emergency. I mean, we need to see it that way. And I understand all of what you're saying. It's a great report and it's a difficult thing to report on and have, you know. We did this so we have more tons or, you know, all of that kind of thing. But we, as the city of Tumwater, can get more specific and tougher. And I don't know if tough is a good word, but we're not doing all we can do. And I bring this up every time. We need a good conversation between this crisis and whether it's trees and my God, the prairie and all of that kind of thing and development. And what are our regulations around development and what are we going to do about this? What are we as Tumwater going to take steps to do? And I had a good talk with some of the folks in Lacey and they're moving on some of these things. And we, we need to do that. And I think it's critical. And I want us as a city to live out what we put on paper and what we say we are and what we want to do and treat this as if it is a shorter game crisis. Whether we concede all the results or not, we know that it makes a difference if you cut down big trees and put up small trees. Both sequester, not the same. So anyway, that's my speech for this time of having this discussion. And I'm challenging myself and everybody on this council and every staff member in our city, this is a crisis and we need to, we need to do more. And I appreciate what you've done and what you've reported because this should be just a, you know, kick in the, you know what, for everybody to get going. I mean, and do whatever we can do. Do all we can do. And hopefully, we're headed in that direction as a city. So thanks for coming tonight and giving this info because it's very, very important. You've done some good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, if I can, first off, thank you, Allison. And if I can just highlight a couple of things that I think are intriguing here as follow-up to what's been said. You know, first off, you know, as Councilmember Kathy often says, we take down a big tree and we replace it with sticks. I think there's an opportunity in here that Allison's presentation highlighted that, you know, we live with the challenge of the mandate of growth management and accommodating growth and accommodating housing and all those kinds of things, which, you know, our work is never easy because it's balancing. And so I see a potential opportunity in that if one of the things that can help with carbon sequestration is the preservation of rural forests, then maybe there's an opportunity to leverage tree loss in urban areas with the protection of trees in rural areas. And allow those, you know, mid-age forests to become long-term forests permanently. You know, part of, part of the challenge here is about creating permanence and long-term, long-term security. And so the cousin to that actually is the prairies. Where we talk about gopher mitigation and we're, you know, we're closing in on a habitat conservation plan that calls for over fifteen hundred acres of permanently preserved prairie. Well, you know, we've struggled at the legislature to get the investment from the legislature for the initial purchase of that land. We vouched over and over for two and a half million dollars to begin that so that it's a replicating program. We spend the two and a half million, we buy land, we turn it into suitable prairie. We sell those credits and then we buy more land and turn it into prairie and work it forward that way. Maybe there's an opportunity here with some of the sequestration funding that came out of the legislature to actually use it to jumpstart that program. Because a relatively small investment of two and a half to four million dollars to seed that program would then replicate itself year after year after year, ultimately resulting, taking that four million dollars and turning it into fifteen hundred acres of permanently preserved prairie. That's a, that's a, that's a really great investment. So we're trying to think through that and talk to some folks in state agencies to figure out if there's a strategy there that we could work on to move that forward.
Councilmember Gaby.
I am trying to find the data for livestock management. What does that include of, let me back up. For the, we did a, we did a, we did a, about agricultural, African technical assistance. Oh, we didn't it about agriculture. Does that include livestock management?
It, it can. It sort of depends how you define that. I think, I think sometimes when people talk about, I'd have to look into the, there is a specific protocol for carbon offsets around livestock management. And I'm, I'm not sure what all goes into that. But some of it might be around manure management or types of feeds and things, and that is a way to reduce emissions. It's not necessarily on the carbon sequestration side. But regenerative agriculture does include some management practices around things like how, things like rotational grazing are a regenerative agriculture practice so that you're managing kind of where livestock is to allow areas to recover and continue sequestering. So it's, I don't have a, it's, I can always point you to the information where they, where what's included in livestock management, but it can fall in both camps.
Councilmember Kathy.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to respond to taking down trees in the urban area, which is what I was saying and honor what, and I believe what Administrator Don said. We've talked about it many times, that I'm concerned about taking down trees in what we call a livable city. Because the, every time we destroy parts of our canopy, that we call it, our tree canopy, we allow heat. Uh, our tree canopy, we allow heat, we allow the areas to heat up. And we have people living without shade. Or so on and so forth. I mean, these are some of the things that we, we need to think about. And living closer together and, and people taking down. Big shade trees or something, cause they don't like the leaves and, you know, a whole variety of different things. We need to control some of this. In a different kind of way. And I know private property stuff is difficult. But this is why I'm encouraged about finally, we may be getting some, you know, new. Tree preservation things. Who went through this whole urban forestry thing? Urban forestry is the city. And taking down things in the city for a tree to grow. In the county doesn't do it. It, it, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't make our city more livable or cooler. Or all of those kinds of things. So that's just an, I'm just bringing that up. Because that's another one of these balance things, just like, uh, you know, administrator Don is saying, that, that's, that's a balance. Somehow we have to. We have to think about that every single time we have these conversations or we make. You know, new, uh, set new goals or make new regulations. So I just um. I think. Keeping our city from. Warming up is also an important thing. So. Thank you.
Councilmember Sora.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Allison. Um. Just, this report is amazing. There's a lot of data in here. And so I really, really appreciate your work on it. And then at some point, Elizabeth will. We'll chime in too. Uh, as the, serving on the Tumwater Climate Mitigation Team are the. It's, it's really been interesting. Um, it's, it's like trying to wrap your head around this, um, this topic. Uh, there's just so many uh moving parts to it as far as how we're going to um address our climate goals. Um, and one of the reasons I was interested in having this presented is that we will be looking at our growth management and uh. Uh, or excuse me, the urban, sorry, it's the Growth Management Act will be going or Comprehensive Plan. Right? We'll be going over the Growth Management Act. Um, and that includes like uh, being fine tuning. Putting our climate goals in there as well and uh. And that just kicks off a lot of different things uh when it, with our uh building codes, so different things like that, I believe. So um. And I appreciate what uh. Councilmember Kathy said, you know, we talking about trees is that to look at them also as like a public health issue sometimes. And uh, so I appreciate what you're saying there. Um. And this one or last random comment, it's just, it, what'll be interesting about the rural part of trying to maintain forests that a hundred and seventy thousand. Acres are privately owned. So it's like seventy three percent of the rural. Uh, the forests in Thurston County are privately owned. So um, the challenge there to um. Is it how, and how do you maintain how, do it potentially acquire some of these properties to be able to um put them into. You know, to save them and if for in perpetuity like uh, councilmember Althos are talked about. So it's a challenge, it really is. So um. I just really appreciate having more, the more data, the more information that we have that uh helps us make better decisions as we move forward. So, thank you.
That's my thought.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanna circle back to Joan's comment and all of the comments. On the report page thirteen, there's a table, carbon sequestration potential. Um, we, so going to Joan's comment and then looking at this. You know, I immediately wanna go, okay, biggest bang for the buck, right? If this is only really ten percent of the overall. What can we do, like less than a million dollars, right? But then we look at, again, the. The high, it's rural, 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 right? And Joan's comment, urban is low. So seeing that table, how does that influence those other elements of that balance that John also talked about? When that table said that urban trees in the prairie is low, right? So that's. I guess hard for me as, as we move forward, how do we? Right? I immediately wanna go to the high, let's do the high. So, but if. Taking in the Jones comment and John's. If the urban trees and the prairies are low, then why should we make those a priority if they're noted as low potential?
Uh, I'll, I'll speak to that. I mean, I think that's a, that's a really important conversation for you all to have. Um, and to, to. The idea, I, I think your comprehensive plan update is an, that's what. Comprehensive plans are for is, is to have that conversation about how do you balance those things? We did a couple of case studies as part of um looking at other communities and how have they thought about these. And so something like an urban, there are a number of urban tree planting programs that are out there and generally uh trees in urban areas. Uh, I, I think one of the conclusions we got from that is that. Um, they're valuable for many reasons. And carbon sequestration is one of those reasons, but probably not the biggest one. Um. They, trees in urban areas are so important for public health, for cooling, for stormwater management. For sense of place and aesthetics and so many reasons that you wanna have them. I think it's important to recognize. Um, that carbon sequestration. Might be a goal that you have. But you wanna think about it in the balance where it, it's maybe not the only goal that you have. That was really central to the climate mitigation plan, the way we did it. It was set up to be like, we, we wanna achieve these targets, but we wanna do it in a way. That will have multiple benefits for our community and it will help us achieve our overall community vision. Um, and I think that's that difficult conversation that we have to have. Part of what we need to do in the climate mitigation plan also is concentrate urban growth in urban areas. And minimize loss of, of forests. But at the same time, you don't wanna lose uh aspects that contribute to the quality of life in your urban areas. I'm not giving you, I don't have a solution for you in this paper. There's, it, it's, it's a value judgment for you to make. We can put numbers to what is the sequestration value of this or that policy. Um, and you can do kinds of, of values for those things, but, but ultimately it is kind of a value judgment of, of where you wanna balance those multiple benefits.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, sometimes I feel like there is no balance, we're juggling, right? And so, thank you for this therapy session, Allison.
So I actually have a question too. Um, what about um? The health of the forest, uh, you know, so some areas, you know, when you get. Disease and unhealthy trees, unhealthies uh. Then you have uh, a bill, you know, then you start running the risk of fires, forest fires, those kinds of things. So how do you balance? A tree to a healthy tree and what amount of um. Measure does that have when you're trying to balance what you need to preserve? Um, and then also, you know, cause I mean, we certainly don't want. Uh, fires in, in uh tree areas, you know, like Capital Forest, let's say, or other areas. Where um we may have um not, not the healthiest trees. So how, how does that play into it?
Really great question. Um. It's abs, it's absolutely a risk. It's a risk that's increased because of climate change. It's a risk that happens anyway. Disease, forests, um, fires are things that happen anyway. We know that they're likely to increase. Under climate change and what, that is something that gets measured. Um, through that learn tool and through other kinds of assessments. There's a really great detailed, more detailed assessment uh through. The Forest Service that really looks in detail about timberlands and assesses the health. But part of what's built into that learn tool and one reason to monitor um. Those carbon stocks over time is to see how uh that bank that we have. In our, our forests, how that might be changing over time. Are we losing more areas to fire or a disease? That's a risk. It's not. Um, just because we have it today doesn't mean that we couldn't lose it from those factors in addition to losing it um from things like forest conversion. So it is, it's a reason, I think, to continue monitoring at some level long term. Because not only do we need to increase the amount of sequestration that's happening to meet our targets, we've gotta keep. Keep, keep that bank of what we've got. And so understanding that is important. But there are tools out there that do that. There are um some pretty robust assessments that exist that look specifically at things like. Uh. How, how insect damage or fire, how that affects that overall carbon balance.
Great, thank you. Uh, any other questions? So this has been very, very helpful and um great discussion. Uh, and like so many things we deal with, there is like no easy answer to any of it. So um, it's all about balance and learning and finding ways that we can meet. Get to where we wanna go, so.
Absolutely. I, I would just highlight, um, you've got fantastic staff. Um, I know they're thinking really carefully about this. I would, you know, look to them to say, you know, where to go next. How to move these pieces forward. Um, because really, you know, we did this background research. But it, it's just that, it's kind of on, it's in your, your plate now for how you wanna move forward and there, there are options for you. And there's no silver bullet, unfortunately, sorry. Uh, but, uh, but there are, the good news is that there, there are things that, that we could be doing as a region. Uh, and I think um staff will have some really good ideas about how to do that.
Great, thank you. Alright, uh, with that, we will move to Mayor City Administrator Report and John, do you want to go?
Yes, I would love to. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so this is like, this is a conversation about Facebook. And council member Facebook pages, uh, we are circling back on this, this sort of came out of the. Council retreat and conversation, goodness gracious, about a year ago. Um. And we wanted to, wanted to come back to it. Um, and, and my task is to just sort of frame this. Um, fundamental, and then Anne's gonna do sort of the presentation. Fundamentally, the question we're asking is, you know, whether or not you're still interested in having individual council Facebook pages. Um, there's not a right or a wrong answer in this story. Um, there are some trade offs and issues and we mostly just wanna make sure everyone's aware. If you're inclined to say yes. You want to have them? We just wanna make sure you understand what, what, what you're getting into. So. You know, your, your world can, can potentially have three different aspects of Facebook or social media. Okay, one is, and some of you have none of these things. And so you can just sort of sit back and go, this, I don't want one, I don't have one. And I don't care about this conversation. Um, for the rest of you who may be interested. You can have a personal page. Okay, and a personal Facebook, you post the things from your personal life, pictures of your dinner, pictures of your dog. Pictures of your vacation, I mean, whatever it is, you announce your favorite TV show, all those kinds of things, okay? The. The other kind is you could have an election Facebook page. It is all about your political aspirations, whether they are. With the city of Tumwater, so they repeat every couple of years, or they're beyond the city of Tumwater, or they're how you got to the city of Tumwater, whatever. And that's really focused on and guided by compliance with the PDC rules. Okay, um. And some, some of you have your personal things and your election things sort of mixed together. It's not really our position at the city to guide that one way or the other. We typically advise people to separate those two. Because it allows you to keep a bright line as to what are like election expenses, election comments, election activity. That happened over here, you know, elect me versus here's what I had for dinner last night. I had pork chops and applesauce. And you don't, and you don't mix those two. The third piece is, is like, is a campaign. Or I'm not, I'm sorry, not a campaign, but a city Facebook page, okay? And the issue with the city Facebook page is that as soon as you begin doing city work. Okay, what could be perceived as city work? So that could be responding to constituents. It could be posting pictures of city activities. It could be commenting on a upcoming ordinance or the budget. It could be um commenting on some other activity that's happening, you know. Even, even with one of the activities where you participate, the regional groups that you participate in. The challenge with that is that you are creating public records. We have an obligation, a requirement to archive those public records. And we have our, our legal requirement to be able to search those public records. That's the reason for archiving them. Archiving them is not just for the fun of storing them for, you know, future generations, but actually for the purpose of storing them. So council member X said. Whatever, I think the ordinance should pass, someone could ask us for all of the public records related to council member X and that ordinance, okay? It is that requirement that really sort of complicates this story. Okay, and it's the reason why we're having this conversation. Because when you take your personal page. Or your political page, and you make it a city page, that's when the complications show up. So, so the conversation is to provide more detail about those three different kinds of pages. Man's probably going, he just gave my entire presentation. Um, so we wanna, we wanna talk through those and um. And then just talk about where do people wanna be? Um, again, no right answer, wrong answer. Previously, there was interest in doing council member Facebook pages. And if there is, then we'll talk a little bit about how that gets implemented in the ramifications of that. When we get all done with this topic, I have one more question for you that's a little bit easier. So, and has nothing to do with Facebook. So with that, let me turn it over to Anne.
Thank you, City Administrator Downe and City Council. I thank you in advance. Um. I'm gonna really just go through, John did a wonderful uh overview of the presentation. And then I'm gonna share some examples that are ripped from the headlines, other cities, other council members. Um, were they either came under scrutiny or made some good choices with social media? So. I'm gonna go ahead and share. I wish we were doing this in person. Um, so you can all see the cover page, I'm guessing. Excellent. So as John said, okay. Um, your private or your personal account. So just this, this first slide is really recapping again. Um, how you can best use your personal account to keep yourself out of public record. Um. You know, not making your personal account subject to public records. And the safest thing that you can do is really bold face there, like and share content from the city Facebook page. Um, and that way you're just providing something that's available to anybody else in the community. Um, the don'ts, you know, obviously using city devices for your personal accounts, you know, we've got um. City policies in place that address most of these don'ts are probably not a surprise to you right now. Um, you do, if you're using your personal page and you get a question or a comment about city business. Um, for people right now that have a personal page, be sure that, you know, forward it to the city. Uh, so you're not conducting business on your personal page. Pretty much what John um presented earlier. Um, so how many people right now do have a personal um Facebook account? No, so. Where everybody, oh, you all, the whole screen went black, sorry. Um, so those are really great listening tools, you know, great opportunity for dialogue with the community. Um, but we just wanna keep you in this safe space.
So, and. And can I interrupt with just a question there? So when you say like and share content from city Facebook page. That could be the city's main page or the fire department or parks or golf. I mean, there's a number of city Facebook pages that are out there that we archive and manage and take care of and people could repost from any of those. Correct?
Thank you. That is correct. You know, I was thinking about making that distinction this afternoon. I thought I need to do that. And, and here we are, John's doing it. So any, yes, any of our city sponsored accounts.
What about the union ones, like the fire department union, the police union, their pages?
So the city generally, um, we do not like or share their content, cause quite often it's political. And so it would be similar to liking or sharing uh council members' campaign page. Um, so we, we tend to let that one stand alone. They can do things with that account that don't. Um, so we, we tend to let that one stand alone, they can do things with that account that don't fall within, um, you know, what the city would do.
Right, but if they do that, and we share it, and it's related to city business, that becomes a record. If we share it, correct? So we need to be careful about those specifically.
Yeah, yeah, those, but for the unions, they are not archiving their content. So, what makes it safe with other city content is it's being archived, so it's being captured somewhere and is in the system.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions here, and I'll show you a, a story from a, a city in Pierce County. So, are you ready to see the story from Pierce County? Okay, so this could happen to any of us, the council member has a personal Facebook page. The purpose was just to provide information to our constituents, that sounds reasonable, right? Is just sharing information. So, there was a public records request, so the first question, were these Facebook posts public records? And she's clearly doing, you know, best practice, she's sh- sharing content from the city website. And so in searching for su- uh, public records, there weren't any available, because this account is not archived. Um, so, they do constitute public records. Um, in some cases, so I want you to look a little carefully, so there's several, two examples of her posts, this is sharing city content. And this is, she's creating her own content. So, the outcome of this is a really, this shows you how tricky this is. So they do, um, they are classified as writings, she did reference city business, but she linked to the city website. But because she was disseminating generally available information that anybody in the community could share, and she wasn't creating the content as a council member, the court decided those were not public records, very narrow line there. And I see council members swerve out, um, this probably sounds really familiar to you, doesn't it? I wouldn't want to be making that interpretation for myself. And the, uh, their city, um, attorney came back and they did some more training, because had her post been just any slightly different, um, they would have been records and they would have been in violation, um, by not archiving them. Did anybody's head hurt yet? So, the takeaways from that is, you know, just always, and we do this, um, we would encourage council members, you know, does your job, as a council member require this post? Is this an official city page, and are you conducting city business? So again, that little, last little, if you're simply disseminating information that's already out there, you're great. If you're having discussions on council business or matters before the council, you're probably getting into an area where you're conducting business. Would you like to see another example? Of course. Um, oh, we're gonna skip, I'm sorry, we're gonna go to campaign, um, John talked about campaign, and adhering to the PDC election guidelines, putting a disclaimer on your page, you do have a campaign page, don't raise your hand right now. Um, but this is a good opportunity to remind you that, um, you can't use a city sponsored page if we go in that direction. And your campaigning page may not in, use your city email or, um, city phone number. Because that would be, you know, use of city facilities, which is a PDC violation. And I'm gonna keep that pretty brief, that's a whole special, area. So, so let's say we're, we're thinking we want to have an official Facebook page or a city sponsored Facebook. So you'll get to manage that page, just like we manage our city accounts. So the first thing is you would have to adhere to our city social media policy. Adhere to our ethics guidelines and any other state laws, so that would be, you know, around, um, uh, use of public funds, um, promoting, and you'll see under the don't, you know, posting, if you're creating your own content, um, to advertise as a, a specific business or product, those would be prohibited. Um, your account would be archived for compliance with records retention, as John said, so we can search them, um, and provide records. You would be required to limit friending or liking each other's pages, um, because we don't want to vi- violate, um, OPMA or create a serial meeting chain conversation, I'm not sure which one Karen prefers. Um, and then we would ask you, even in with your official page, you know, to frequently link back to a city resource, either another social media page or the website. Uh, and again, if you think back to the, feel up council person, conducting city business, uh, public noticing, so you know, you're probably really well intentioned in helping out and wanting people to know about an upcoming meeting. Um, asking people questions about upcoming, uh, policy decisions. Uh, commenting on positive judicial matters, um, those are areas that you wouldn't be able to, um, uh, provide that, uh, platform through your city Facebook page. And as you might guess, linking back to, um, campaigns, you can't use the city page for comments, links, content that endorses the major or another candidate. So, that probably sounded really negative, right? But, but there's a big don't list. Um, any questions or comments, just in general, about a city sponsored page? Yes, City Administrator Dawn?
If I can just real quick, just, um, i- in case folks aren't familiar with the term, the chain conversation, and they, and this is one that can creep up on you really fast in Facebook land. Because you, you post something, and even you follow the rules and you repost something from the city, um, and then potentially, you know, another, another council member, co- council member X posted, council member Y also comments and says, yeah, that's a great program. And then council member Z posts, oh yeah, I love that program. We'll come to find out X, Y, and Z are all members, they're not a quorum of the council, but they are a quorum of some committee somewhere, and now you've created of, a serial meeting. And remember that for some of your committees, a conversation between two of you, um, is a, is a quorum. It also can happen, council member X from Tom Water posts something, council member Y, from Olympia posts a response, and council member Z from Olympia posted a response, and come to find out, they were all members of some regional group and formed a quorum of it, and so that's how that, that chain conversation can happen, and F- Facebook almost invites it. Um, because people want to like and comment and sort of support each other, and, and you can see how that, um, can happen pretty easily. So, I, I'm sorry, Anne.
No, I thought it was great, and I did see several council members nodding their heads, in the affirmative with serial meeting and chain conversation, so.
I think councilor Swarthaw has heard you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Swarthaw, you're still muted.
Sorry, oh, sorry, um, last year, that was one of the topics that they brought, one of the things you could take at the AWC, um, that talked about Facebook and, um, the hidden consequences now, I mean, just things you just don't know what you don't know, and to have things happen. Um, but I do have a question, do, I was just curious, does like, um, the city of Olympia or Lacey, do they have, their own, the council members have their own city page, their own pages, I didn't, I wasn't sure if they did or not, um. I was just wondering how prevalent that is with other councils.
And I, I don't, I didn't actually check Olympia or Lacey, um, this most recent time, so I apologize. I was looking at some examples here, primarily because they, there were some, um, there's some case law that was involved with them, um. But what I can tell you is there are very few, um, cities that have council member social media policies. Um, so, we can, I can look into that some more and get back to you on, um, what's happening in Lacey and Olympia.
Okay, now, did you have something else?
Uh, I was just to say too, that, um, I know that the legislators have their own, will have their own pages and all, and, um, it's, it's very difficult, um. The le- the, uh, legislative ethics board, um, there's many times when things that are posted, or, um, when people have, you know, like when you're making a comment and these little kind of wars going back and forth, that it's very public, you know, and so these comments, and you think that no one's paying attention, or that they're just gonna disappear, but, um, comments you make on your Facebook page, um, can really come back to bite you sometimes, so, um, so it's just really with caution that how you use your Facebook and, um, yeah, so, just wanna share that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Al Taser?
Yeah, in, in advance of the meeting, I, I went to see if they did have them, and I did not see any, personal pages for Lacey or Olympia, I think the only jurisdiction that has them is our, our county commissioners do have them. Like county commissioner Mensah, Mensah, Men- Mensah and county commissioner Mickey, uh, both have personal Facebook pages, but, I don't think any other city council members do, at least if they do, I wasn't able to find any of them.
Oh, thank you. I have one more example, if you're interested in, um, just, we can walk through, you know, how, um, you can respond to, uh, on your personal page, um, if you're posting or creating content. Or we don't have to screen share anymore, it's entirely up to you, um, if we want to shift, and John can lead a conversation about interest. Um, and we can continue to answer questions, so what's your pleasure?
I'll, I'll dive in and suggest we, you share that example, in the spirit of.
Alright, so. So here's a Facebook post. And you can, you can see that, uh, it's talking about, I don't know, a road project like Capital and Trumper. And there's a question from a constituent. So, this is a personal Facebook page, so does everyone have in their mind how you would respond to this? So, here's one question, I have a little hint for you with the thumbs down. So in this instance, the person has decided to provide information and answer the question directly, but you already knew, that that wasn't the proper thing to do on your personal Facebook page, right? So the answer is, this is how you send it back to the city. And the clever thumbs up is the clue, right? And conversely, you can give a link to the city website. And this keeps your personal Facebook, a personal page, and you're not creating a record. So this person created their own content, which is an area what we, we would encourage you not to do on your personal page, but if you do, these are some things you want to ask yourself. Are you posting, um, information that's you only have because of your position, or is it information that anybody could get? And would you be posting this if you weren't a councilperson? And did Anne or John or the mayor ask you to post this, um, in order to further, you know, the city's interest? Pretty simple rule of thumb, if you want to keep your personal page. So, we could go on, but, I'm guessing we'd like to stop sharing and go to the conversation, but I would like to know, did you all pass the quiz?
Yeah, yeah. I was just surprised that he posted about concrete at two fifty-five in the morning. And then the first comment was at three oh one in the morning, and then he replied back at three oh three, like, these people are, are, I got better things to do at three in the morning, I'll just leave it that, but.
I don't know, paving, that, people love paving on Facebook, I'm just gonna tell you, we get a lot of good responses, so.
They do. So, I, again, my apologies, we really don't mean this to be a sort of Debbie Downer sort of conversation. It is, it's just, you know, it's like, it's one of those places where all the limitations and liability and restrictions related to elections, and records, and all those kinds of things sort of converge into, into one happy space. And they sort of collide with the community's expectation of their elected officials, to give them information, to talk with them, to, I mean, that's the other half of the story, and that's sort of what makes this very difficult. And we certainly appreciate that, you know, the public wants to see you and hear from you and converse with you, and yet there's all these sort of restrictions on how, on how that happens. So, I guess we'd like to just open it up, any more questions, conversation? Ultimately, we want to walk away with some understanding of how many folks are interested in having a city Facebook page.
Councilmember Dahlup?
Thank you, Mayor, my answer for me is no, I don't want a city sponsored Facebook page.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, um, my only reason for wanting it to begin with, was just for disseminating information, but we had had that discussion, and it sounded like Anne, you know, permission from Anne and, and permission from the mayor or John, because, especially with food insecurity, I had discussed the, the food commodities program, and just things like that, that our community should know about, um, the little food pantry. And just to let, um, people know about that, that was my only concern, is to help me, disseminate this information. So, sounds like we can possibly use the city website to disseminate that information, is that correct?
That is correct. And anything that's already on a city social media, um, for police, fire, city, uh, we have one for Brew Fest. So, as long as you're just liking and sharing it, um, it, well, it won't mix your personal, um, with city business.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
So let's cut to the chase, raise your hand if you'd like to have a city Facebook page. Okay, seeing none, just to be clear, nobody's missed it, there's nobody who wants to have a city Facebook page, great. We will, we will proceed, um. But again, I appreciate the, this is the collision of lots of complex regulations and case law, with the public's desire to have, you know, unending access and information from you, and that's just difficult stuff. The second question I wanted to ask, and maybe this one is easier, council member Kathy, did you have something you wanted to add, I saw you unmiking?
What, I'm not, definitely not voting to have a Facebook page, but I, uh, with this vote tonight, I, I think I heard, Karen Kirkpatrick clapping, I, I don't know. I think so, I think so.
You, you could be right, she could be dancing.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so my second question, um, is about, um, the timing for regular meetings, and, uh, we currently have regular meetings that start at seven PM. We have work sessions that start at six PM. Our work sessions are, are looking more and more like, particularly with Zoom and all the video access that we have, and, things like that are looking more and more like regular meetings. Uh, the question is whether or not you would like to move your regular meetings, the first and third Monday to six PM instead of seven PM. Um, both Olympia and Lacey came out of COVID and have kept their meetings at six PM. Um, it would, the only issue, the only reason I sort of put it out there, is sort of consistency of timing, so that we don't have some meetings at this time and some meetings at that time. Um, it would be easier to tell that story to the public, but I put it out there for your discussion and consideration.
Councilor Swarthaw?
Um, does Olympia, do they do like a, a work session first, and then they go to regular, um, council meetings, isn't that their format? I was, I don't know that they do, have a specific work sessions like we do, don't they morph them together?
Yeah, so, so that, they usually do an executive session, followed by a work session, followed by a regular, a regular meeting. They do fewer meetings, but they're longer, they usually do like seventeen meetings a year. They usually do like seventeen meetings a year, but they're much longer. We do more of them, but they're shorter.
Councilmember Al Taser.
Um. Does this conflict with planning commission at all? If we changed it, how does that impact? Or am I thinking of planning commission meets on the same day as work sessions, not council?
Yeah, and planning, planning commission is now meeting in the fire conference room. So. So there's not that physical overlap. There may be a time overlap occasionally, but you have that sometimes now even.
Yeah. So at seven PM, works pretty well for me. I mean, if, if the group wants to change it to six, I'm fine with doing that. Um, during the first few months of the year, when. I'm just speaking from my own perspective. For the first couple of months of the year is obviously when my calendar is most challenging. And seven PM is much easier to make those meeting times for me personally. But um I could also defer to the group if there are strong feelings otherwise.
Councilmember Dahlup.
Thanks, Mayor. I am along with Michael with working and caregiving. Seven PM actually gives me the flexibility to be better prepared. Um, but I will also go along with consensus. If they want six o'clock, I'll just have to figure it out. But I do prefer seven for my personal reasons.
Councilmember Cobby. And then I'm going to councilmember Kathy.
So I am with uh. Councilmember um Altizer and Dahlup. And again, my only issue is moving to six o'clock and then I, we have the urge to make it a whole lot longer. So seven works fine for me because I have work.
Councilmember Kathy.
Seven o'clock is my voice also. I won't say if I work or not.
They all work.
Councilmember Jefferson, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. And um I'm flexible. It sounds like the group wants seven, so um I vote for seven along with the group.
Okay, okay. We will, we will leave it at seven and I just wanted to create some space, ask the question and. Um, we'll go from there. Good, thank you. Madam Mayor, I have nothing else.
All right, and I actually do not have any things um. Else on my, on my end, so uh councilmember Kathy.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say that this is our last meeting before the first of June, which starts Pride Month. And I just wanted to say, I hope the, the, the city and everyone is geared to um put the flag up. On or before the first of June and fly it for the month. So I just. I'm, I have some pride in that and I always wanted to see it get up there.
Yes, and we're working on the proclamation too.
Yeah, great.
You'll have that at the meeting in June. Like, I think June sixth.
Thank you.
Any other con, questions or comments? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.